I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council President Pro Tem Sampi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Here.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Present.
President McDermott.
Here.
Acquorum is present.
Thank you. We will now begin this evening's meeting with special announcements and presentations. We are going to start with our kids in the Compassionate City Program here in Westland and our kids from Wayne Westland Schools. You are turned on.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Fawnin and I'm the supervisor of social emotional learning for Wayne Westland Community Schools. And I'm here this evening to welcome three of our students from Wayne Westland for the Compassion Project. So our first student from Wayne Memorial High School is Leila Brown. Leila, if you would come up here with me with your teacher Heather Cook and also your principal, come on up. Mr. Corey Gildersley. And Leila's compassionate act was she always has a kind heart, always helps others understand assignments, or even just compliments others. She is a very good student in class and always has a smile on her face. Congratulations, Leila. And then next up from John Glenn High School, I'm going to welcome Sophia Lynn with staff Colleen Sharkey, who is a speech and language pathologist at John Glenn, and Dr. Mary Jenkins Williams Assistant Principal. Sophia's random act of kindness is randomly, or I'm sorry, opening the doors for others consistently, putting out other students' materials at the beginning of her AP Calculus class so others don't have to get them, and helping a student who is feeling anxious. The student reported that Sophia's words brought her comfort and encouragement and said that these small gestures of compassion have brightened up her days. Congratulations, Sophia. And then our third and final student from William D. Ford Career Technical Center is Naieli Rodriguez, who is here with Diane Back, school social worker, and David Brinkerhoff, teacher. If you guys could come on up. So Naieli's random act of kindness is that she has assisted other classmates all year with their assignments and projects, whether it involves using computer-aided design software, 3D printers, or tools and resources. Thank you, Naieli. And at this time, our Westland City Council is going to come down and present our three students with certificates.
While the others make their way down here.
Sophia, thank you so much for being a compassionate student within the district. When you treat other people, it obviously recognizes you. Thank you.
And Leila, we want to thank you for being a compassionate student in the district and your active kindness. And we have this.
Thank you.
And Naieli, I'm Mayor of the City of Westland. Thanks for being so kind to your fellow students and everybody at school. Congratulations.
Okay, lot of great kids doing compassionate acts here, and we love to see it in the City of Westland. Next up, we will have our Hassan Saab with the, and the mayor with the holiday decorating contest.
Well, hey, good evening, everybody. As mayor, I would like to present our holiday decorating contest winners for our annual 2023 home decorating contest here in the City of Westland. And I'm with Director Hassan Saab. So we had some great participants this year. The awards are going to go to best traditional display, most creative display, and most over-the-top display. So we're going to start with our best traditional display. And the award goes to 415 North Sybil Street, which is Jason Wright. Jason, are you here? Congratulations, Jason. And if you look up on the screens here, you're, hi, hi, hi. Nice to meet you. You want to do that? What do you want to say?
It's a, it's a.
Wow, congrats. So up on the display, you'll see that the best traditional display. So congratulations, guys. And that looks great. So thanks for being so festive. Yes. Next up, we have our most creative display. And the award for most creative display goes to 31741 Birchwood Street. And that's going to be Patrick Del Sasso. Patrick, did I say that right? And then we got one more. And this is our most over-the-top award. And you'll see it on the screen in a moment, but it's 33873 Blackfoot. Are you here? They're not with us. Congratulations. These look great. As mayor, it's my honor to say thank you for being so festive and decorating your homes and your neighborhood so beautifully. We love it. And I just want to thank everyone for the holiday spirit and hopefully, you know, you'll keep it up next year. But let's take a picture and congratulations to you guys.
They're ducked behind you and smiled. All right, lots of great holiday displays here. So next up, we will have Miriam Katie with a special announcement and presentation with Friends of the Library and Relay for Life.
Thank you, everyone, for having me. We appreciate that. Thanks for squeezing me in, Council President. I appreciate that. So I am here to talk about a Relay kickoff. It's hard to believe it's already here again for 2024, and it is tomorrow night. Just to reiterate that, I know I've talked about it already once before. Just as a reminder, 6:30 here at the City Hall. The kickoff is to talk about our last year, our accomplishments, things like that. We have a great speaker coming in to talk about issues with cancer and just different subjects. It is pretty amazing. And we talk about what we want to accomplish in 2024 and also for, to reveal our theme also for our June 8th event. So we're excited about that. We hope everyone's invited. There's no charge. We really appreciate you coming there. You could join at that time. You could just learn about Relay, just to come in, just to be with everyone. And we also honor our survivors, and it's just a really great event. It's just to appreciate also what has happened in the past. So we just wanted to say a thank you. But everyone's invited, so please, tomorrow night, City Hall, 6:30. And then also, I want to bring up our Friends of the Westland Library Book Sale coming up. It's our Valentine Book Sale, if you will. Now, we have February 15th is our member. If you're a Friends member, you can get first crack at the books. It's our preview sale, but you could also join that evening if you'd like to have first crack at the books. And then the 16th, 17th, Friday and Saturday, we are having our open to the public, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then Sunday, from 12:00 to 3:00, we have our $4 bag sale. So fill up your bags. We want to get rid of all the books. So it's a great way to give a gift also. And the books are in great condition for a very low price. I mean, if, you know, if you do get our flyer, I mean, 25 cents paperback romance books, 50 cents hard covers are three for a dollar. So it's, it's, you know, very affordable and it's just a funny, fun event and something at the Westland Library, at our new library, that we're excited about. And I so appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Miriam. All right, finally tonight, under special announcements and presentations, we will bring the mayor back up with a presentation for our deputy mayor and former councilman, Godbout.
Thank you, Council President. So at, you know, one of the last meetings in January, I presented a special tribute to a former planning commissioner, Ken Sharp, who served the city for, I think, nearly 50 years. It might have been longer. But this individual, Jim Godbout, he served on city council for 23 years. He's the longest-serving councilman in Westland history, but he recently resigned because I appointed him as deputy mayor of the City of Westland to work with our office, really serve as a chief of staff for the city, work with our Department Huts. I had the pleasure of serving on city council back in 2014 through 2017 while he was our council president. We didn't always get along, as you might remember, but he's somebody that I learned to work with and I learned to really respect and appreciate his knowledge, his experience, and his dedication and passion for the city. And so as mayor, it's really my honor, as a council member leaves council, something special that we do is we present them with a certificate of recognition. So Jim, I'd like you to come up and please receive this on behalf of the city. Thanks for all your service, and we look forward to your continued service to the city, Jim.
Thanks, Mayor. It's a little bit strange sitting over on the side rather than at the dais after 23 years, but, you know, the mayor's keeping me busy. There's plenty to do in the city, and it's my honor to continue on serving the city. So, thank you.
All right. We will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from city council. Is there anyone on my left? Is there anyone on my right? Yes, sir, Mr. Pruitt.
All righty, Edward Pruitt here. I want to speak tonight on one agenda item specifically, Consent Calendar Item E. That item is concerning the sidewalk connectivity to Heinz Park and the agreement. It's on the consent calendar, and I am asking for it to be moved to New Business to be discussed. When we look at that item, there are questions around, I know it was approved through the last budget cycle, 350-something million dollars, or a thousand dollars, to do that program. The concerns that I have is where does it connect to? We have the Heinz Park connectivity, but how does it connect our city further? What's the next step, next goal for our city as well? Another concern I have is, we know that area of Merriman brings a lot of safety issues. We've seen the pothole issue. I'm glad they're fixing roads over there, but, you know, how will that play a part in the future? How does it connect to the bike path? How does it connect to different areas so that it be, bring our city to a higher level of walkability for our community? I think it's important that the people hear the discussion from council and some more information around it, you know, just as the final step, if indeed we're moving forward to approving this. And that's my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on the consent calendar. Anybody on my left? Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to comment on Consent Calendar Item D. The connector route, this is a great thing, from Merriman down to the Heinz Park. It's not only for park users, but walkers like myself and bikers and so on. But to add to that, this goes way back when, like Kay Beard was in office, and I used to request quite a bit for a same thing, a connector route from Middle Belt to Heinz Park, a connector route. They were telling me that's what it's called. Never got that, and we still don't have it. So what we have is like gravel and, you know, tree limbs. I've had to call on a tree falling across like a makeshift path. And I don't know why, because I thought all the other main roads did have a connector route and that we never had one. So think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my right? Consent calendar items.
Agenda.
Agenda items, excuse me. Agenda items. Anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my left? Anyone else in the audience? Seeing, hearing none, we will close comments on the agenda and move to the consent calendar.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Pro Tem Sampi. And there is any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to consent calendar? Councilman Hersberg.
I'd like to move Item D to New Business 1A, just for discussion, please.
There is a motion to move Item D to New Business Item 1A by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Baumann. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Thank you so much. Through the chair to Hassan. There's a diagram in the packet. I don't know if everyone has that. Are you? I'm sorry?
There's a discussion on the motion to move.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were, okay, yes.
It's just a discussion on the motion.
Yes, okay, no discussion. I'm sorry.
All right, so no discussion. Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries. Back to the consent calendar. Is there any changes to consent calendar? Any changes to consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held January 6, 2024. Approval of minutes of the study session held January 22, 2024. Approval of ESRI licensing subscription relating to accessing GIS information and connecting date through CityWorks, data through CityWorks. Subscription will over Zoom immediately and be effective for a one-year period in the amount not to exceed $10,611.78. Adoption of amendments to Chapter 46.2 of the city's Code of Ordinances to adjust rates at the city's golf course and ice arena. This item was introduced January 16, 2024. Adoption of Prepared Land Resolution 6077 and 6011 North Harvey, west side of Harvey, north of Stacy. This was Planning Department Number 2264. And the land division was approved by city council on January 16, 2024. Approval of Michigan Class Investment Pool as an authorized investment institution. And the last item approved on the consent calendar today, approval of request from Livonia Westland Chamber of Commerce to waive the administrative City Hall rental fee to host a leaders event on March 11, 2024 during City Hall hours of operation. The association fee of $175 is waived. Moving to payment of voucher.
There is a motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries.
Moving to New Business, I'm sorry, unfinished business, Item 1. This involves nominations for the office of city council member to fill the unexpired partial term created by the resignation of James Godbout until certification of the November 4, 2025 general city election.
Council President.
Yes, sir.
Wish to nominate Delano Hornbuckle.
Okay.
Can I move to nominate Adam Hammond and Edward Pruitt?
Give me a, give me a moment, please. Just, just one moment. Thank you.
Are there any other nominations? Yes.
Nominate Candy Holton and John Sullivan.
Motion to close nominations.
There is a motion to close nominations. There's support for it. Is there any discussion?
Sorry, who's supported?
Supported by Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you.
Made by Councilman Hart. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
So, the process for this, as many of us know, is that I will write the names of the individuals who received a nomination. I'll write them on a card. I'll place each card inside a box. The box gets shaken where names are removed one at a time. That will represent the order in which that particular nominee is voted. So. Trusty empty box. One card, Delano Hornbuckle. One card, Adam Hammond. One card, John Sullivan. One card, Candy Holton. One card, Edward Pruitt. I'm going to hand this to you for a second, too. Give it a shake. All right. Whatever. Removing cards, first name Candy Holton. I'm going to draw them all before we vote. Second card, John Sullivan. Third card, Delano Hornbuckle. Fourth card, Adam Hammond. Better be the final card. Edward Pruitt. Edward Pruitt. Oh, okay. With your permission, Mr. President, I will call rule on the first name drawn from the box, Candy Holton. Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
No.
Pro Tem Sampe.
No.
President McDermott.
No.
That name will fall. It did not receive sufficient support. Next name, John Sullivan. Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
No.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
No.
Pro Tem Sampe.
No.
President McDermott.
Yes.
That name also did not receive sufficient support, and she'll fall. Next name, Delano Hornbuckle. Councilwoman Bowman.
No.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
No.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Having received a sufficient number of votes, Delano Hornbuckle has been appointed as Westland City Council member.
Yes. We will now take a five-minute recess in order to swear Councilman Hornbuckle in, and we will adjourn here and be back at 7:35. We will now reconvene this meeting of the Westland City Council and begin with new business.
New business. Item 2A, which was consent D. 2A, approval of intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County for the construction and maintenance of a sidewalk to connect Merriman Road to Heinz Park in the amount of $352,000.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart. There's support by Councilwoman Rukowski. Is there any discussion from the maker?
None yet.
Any discussion? Okay, is there any additional discussion?
Thank you. I got excited the last time. I think I was so excited to talk about it. Through the chair to Hassan, in the packet, I don't believe the map shows a decent view of where the sidewalk is being placed. So there's been some questions and discussions, actually, with some of my colleagues. Are you able to maybe tell us exactly on the map where the sidewalk would connect to, to and from? I think it would give a little clarity.
Through the chair, thank you very much for the question. The package has engineering plans that were prepared by OHM, and that's why it probably was difficult to read them. But the sidewalk, the proposed sidewalk, goes from about 500 feet south of Ann Arbor Trail and connects to Heinz Park. It goes through the land, the park land, Heinz Park land, as well as Merriman Road right of way.
Pro Tem, any other discussion?
Thank you. Also, through the chair is a follow-up. So this is on the county's road, if I'm understanding correctly? This is a county road, but we are getting the benefits from this grant. Is that correct?
Correct. The location of that sidewalk is actually within the county road right of way as well as county park, Heinz Park. So this piece of sidewalk is actually one piece of a larger plan to fill sidewalk gaps throughout the city in order to make the city walkable and bikeable city. The agreement that we have in front of you today, tonight, is not to appropriate any money for the project. The project is funded by Transportation Alternative Plan from the Michigan Department of Transportation. The total project cost is $351,000 or $352,000. And we're paying 20% of that, which is $70,000, and the federal government is paying $281,000. The agreement you have tonight is just to allow the city to construct the sidewalk within the county right of way. There's no money value for that agreement.
Thank you.
And generally, just to add, generally, we would do this through a permit from the county, but this time they decided to ask us for an agreement signed by the council in order to maintain the sidewalk within their property. So it's a maintenance agreement.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We don't have the ability to.
To do that unfortunately.
I don't know if any of the directors have it accessible. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying the dollar amount, because I think that's where the hangup is when we look at the agenda. It appears as though we would be spending the $352,000 for $70,000 to be able to have that connectivity, which I think most people have kind of worn the grass to that area already, that we've created the right of way, so to speak. So having the clarity on the figures and the liability end of the city is helpful, and knowing that we're executing an intergovernment agreement as opposed to just the permit, I think provides a lot of clarity. So, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Councilwoman.
Through the chair. As a maintenance agreement, is the dollar amount for the installation? Or is it, I mean, I guess I don't know what it costs to maintain a sidewalk over the years, but from what I read in the agreement, we have full responsibility, the city has full responsibility for the installation and perpetuity, is that the way you say that word, perpetuity, forever maintaining this sidewalk? What does that mean to the city as far as all of that?
Through the chair, the sidewalk would belong to the city, though it is constructed within the county right of way. We would be responsible for maintenance, because it is our sidewalk. The county just wanted us to make sure that we're in agreement with that. And we are, because we do maintain our assets, whether it's sidewalk, roads, bridges, drains, ditches, all of this are maintained by the city, and the cost of doing this is part of Act 51 money, so there's no specific money associated with each project. It's just part of the maintenance, general maintenance, responsibility for the city.
Councilwoman, did you have a follow-up? Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you. Yeah, $352,000 seems like a lot of money. I mean, whether it's a grant or not, it's still our tax dollars. I'm curious, how did this plan start? Was it through our Walk and Roll Committee, or was it from the former administration? Who came up with this specific plan?
Well, for the last few years, like I'd say five years, we had drafted general plan for sidewalks throughout the city, and those sidewalks would fill important gaps that are left from, say, constructing roadways or any other assets. And we started doing application to the Transportation Alternative Fund to fund those projects instead of paying us, paying ourselves for the project. And we were successful. Each year we got one. We got Schuman, we got Palma Road, if you recall, all of those projects that came throughout the years. This is one piece of that big puzzle, and doesn't mean we're going to stop there. We're going to keep going, applying for projects. It's always easy to apply and get money versus spending our own money. But anytime there is a project that costs 20% for us, that's a good deal.
Thanks. I'm all for supporting connectivity to Heinz, the bike path especially. You know, you mentioned it was 500 feet or more, and that's the major cost for the sidewalk, but if you look at the map, that bike path actually goes right up to the intersection of Warren and Merriman. And that would be a lot shorter of a distance to pave sidewalk to connect to that bike path. The way this plan is, people have to cross Merriman Road, and then they have to cross Heinz Drive on their bicycle to even get to the bike path, where if we connect it from the Warren side, it's a short distance and they don't have to cross any streets. So I do have safety concerns, but, you know, I am supportive of connectivity, and it was mentioned about doing Middle Belt as well, you know, I'm very supportive of that. But where this path dumps out, it's not a residential area. There is a couple apartment buildings there, but the vast majority is the DPS yard for Wayne County. It's commercial. I really would like to see this connected up towards Warren. I know the Walk and Roll Committee had a plan, and they wanted to do more bike paths throughout the city along Cowan Road and then connecting into that. This doesn't help that plan whatsoever. So I don't know if I can support it at this time. Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion?
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate the council's feedback on this. I'd like to give Director Hassan one more moment to speak on this and just clarify some of the comments that were made. My understanding is, is the county is funding this for the most part, and this is a big improvement to the area. Changes can be negotiated with the county, I believe, after this is approved, but I want to just get some clarity there. Director Hassan.
Sure. The county's supportive, obviously, of the project. They always help us build this kind of project. We typically do it with agreements just for, to make sure that the county is satisfied as far as we're not going to build something like substandard and just leave it out there to decay, basically, which we don't do usually. We obviously take care of our assets. This specific project, we're only paying 20% of the total cost. Like I said, $70,000 is our total cost. We prepared plans already, and we submitted the plans to MDOT for advertisement. This is the last step needed in order to advertise this project.
Can alterations be made after this is approved?
Yeah, yeah, sure, we can.
So, Council, we could take your feedback and work with the county to alter this. It's just, I want to ask for your consideration that we're paying 20%. You're getting the other 80% covered, so it's a good deal for our taxpayers. Thank you.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Thank you. Through the chair to the director. So I'm hearing two things. I'm hearing that this is the final piece that needs to be made because, you know, the plans have already gone through, the approval's already been met, and then I'm hearing, but yes, we can change it. So is it both? Is it one, or is it the other? If this is the final piece and the plans have already been approved, then how much longer would it take if we made any changes? What would we be anticipating, anticipated? And what would be the additional cost that we would incur perhaps with that changes? Would there be an administrative delay? Would there be additional planning fees that would need to be forwarded and such things like that? Because, you know, if we've been moving in a forward fashion to become connected, I would hate for something to, you know, be yet another year down the road. And as much as we love our county, it's not a very quick process to do much with the county. So that's my trepidation, is if we are going to be making changes, how much further out are we pushing the project?
This, through the chair, this project was scheduled to start in April 2024 and be completed in November 2024. Obviously, you know, if your body decides to do or go in different direction, or the administration decides to go in different direction, we can do that, but that will incur, obviously, additional cost as well as delay for the project.
Thank you.
Also, Councilwoman. Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, and I had some of the same questions. I just want to clarify, how does this work? When we make the application to the county, is it once a year? What if we amend the plan? Do we have to wait till next year? I still didn't hear any clarification.
The money comes from a fund called Transportation Alternative Program. It's a federal program through MDOT. So we make the application without specific details as far as the plan. Once the application is approved and a specific amount of money is allocated to the project, then we go to the drawing board and come up with plans. We did that. The final, and we went through SHPO, which is a state, another step that's required by the state. So we did all those processes and approvals. The last approval was to come from the county, because we're building this in there right of way. So they asked us then to agree to a maintenance plan through this agreement. And if we decide to go in a different direction, and obviously we'd have to go back and change the plans, and we don't know how much it's going to cost more or less, depends on what changes are.
Well, I would be supportive of change to the plan. You know, as mentioned, we're only going to cover 20% of that. I would think that for that same price, 20% of the total cost, we could just pave the sidewalks on Warren. We've been trying to do that for years. We have the new apartment building going up finally. They're going to have sidewalks in front. The only two properties in that stretch of Warren Road that don't have sidewalks are city property and county property. So it just makes sense to me to start there. I mean, we talk about a walkable and bikeable city. Inside Heinz Park, let them deal with that, you know? We need to start doing sidewalks, make our city at the intersections safer and walkable and bikeable.
And alternatively, we could build this way and then add to the plan any enhancement that you may think is feasible.
Thank you. That's all for me.
Pro Tem.
Thank you. Through the chair to Director, I had a question, actually, it's just that, is this right here is given to us through the, I think, TAPS grant, is it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that's given to us, it's going to begin in April, and then after that, it's going to finish up in November. There is an opportunity for us to build on. We have not met with our Walk and Roll, and I'm not sure how, you know, seasoned we are on getting our Walk and Roll back up and running, but at least it's a start. If we back out now, will we lose it? Is there a chance that if we have to reapply, we will not get the money at all?
For sure, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we will have a chance to build more, add more, not just in the area of Warren and Merriman and Heinz Park, but also throughout the city.
And then just one question on my end, through the chair to Director Saab. If we were to amend this, the county, we'd have to go back to the county with an amended proposal, correct, to get approval on that amended proposal?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman.
Through the chair, just one clarifying question. The $352,000 is the total project, and that's all covered by a grant. So even the 70, even the 20% that's Westlands is a grant?
Through the chair, total project cost 350, 80% of that is a grant. And only 70%, it's 20,000, I'm sorry, 20% or 70,000 is paid by the city as a contribution to the project.
Okay, because on the background information, it says that this is fully funded by a grant.
Yeah, it is fully funded with a match money, yes, with a match requirement.
Councilman Hart?
Call the question.
I'm going to call the question. Is there support? Okay. Is there any discussion? Oh, it's been, we can't discuss the call. I'm sorry. Yep. Roll call.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
No.
Councilwoman Rukowski?
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle? Pro Tem Sampe?
Yes.
President McDermott?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item 3. Item three. Approval of minutes of study session held January 23, 2024.
Some of support.
There is a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from supporter? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski?
Staying due to absence.
Councilman Hornbuckle? Pro Tem Sampe?
Yes.
President McDermott?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item four. Confirmation of appointment of Darryl Rounds to the Westland Planning Commission to fill an unexpired term effective upon council confirmation and to expire August 20, 2026.
Some of support.
There is a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mayor, did you have any comments?
Thank you, Council President. I want to just thank Mr. Rounds for offering to serve our community on Planning Commission. He's a professional. He's lived in the city a long time. I've known him for over a year now, and just want to ask for your support. I believe that he'll do a great job for us. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Roll call, Mr. Kurt.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle? Councilwoman Rukowski?
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe?
Yes.
President McDermott?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. New business. Item five. Confirmation of appointment of Brian Hopkins to the Westland Planning Commission to fill an unexpired term effective upon council confirmation and to expire September 17, 2024.
Some of support.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Sampe. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Just again, I want to thank Mr. Hopkins for offering to serve our community. It's, these are positions, you know, they're, they're not big paid jobs. You get a small stipend for each meeting. But this is an individual who's lived in our city a long time. He wants to make a difference and serve our community on Planning Commission. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter?
Yes. I actually have known Mr. Hopkins for quite some time. He's a business owner in the city, and I'm very proud to support him. I actually spoke with him on the break and said, I'm so happy you're getting involved. So thank you very much for your commitment, and I look forward to seeing what you do to the Planning Commission. Salutely.
Is there any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Dissent? Any dissent? Roll call.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle?
Stay.
Councilwoman Rukowski?
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe?
Yes.
President McDermott?
Yes, please stand and be recognized.
New business. Item six. Confirmation of appointment of David Sukas to the Westland Planning Commission effective upon council confirmation and to expire March 6, 2026.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Bowman, supported by Pro Tem Sampe. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. David Sukas, thank you for offering to serve our community once again on Planning Commission. You have a long history of service to our community and honored to nominate you. And just thank you for offering to offer your services. Look forward to seeing you serve on Planning Commission. Thank you, council.
Any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter?
Of course. Thank you so much. David has been a great resource, and he has a lot of knowledge in public service. So thank you for committing to Westland and coming back home to support. Be happy to support.
Okay. Any discussion? I will say too, David, thank you for your continued support in the community. We know longstanding support here in Westland. You're a valued asset, as everybody here is tonight, so thank you for that. Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle?
Stay.
Councilwoman Rukowski?
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe?
Yes.
President McDermott?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Sukas standing, please be recognized.
New business. Item seven. Confirmation of appointment of Julian Bowman to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term effective upon council confirmation and to expire February 5, 2028.
There is a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rukowski. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Bowman, thank you for offering to serve on the DDA, Downtown Development Authority. We appreciate your effort, your time, and your commitment to the city. Thank you, City Council.
All right. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle? Councilwoman Rukowski?
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe?
Yes.
President McDermott?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Please stand and be recognized.
New business. Item eight. Confirmation of appointment of Dan West to the Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a six-year term effective upon council confirmation and to expire February 5, 2030.
Some of support.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilwoman Bowman. Mayor?
I'd love a term that long. Thank you, City Council. Mr. West is the president and CEO of the Livonia Westland Chamber of Commerce. He's somebody that understands the business community and city government in general. And I just want to thank you, Mr. West, for offering to serve on this board. Thank you, council.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Yes. Thank you. I've had the pleasure of knowing Mr. West for a number of years, maybe longer than the term might be. I served in Livonia as the J.C.'s president, and Dan and the Chamber of Commerce were kind enough to allow us to convene there as well as lend his mentorship. And he is a fantastic chamber president in Livonia, and he just knows business and how to work with our small businesses to make them successful. So I know that his experience doing that will just be such a wonderful addition to our Tifa board.
Not quite, little creamed syrup. Any discussion from the supporter?
I too have had the pleasure of knowing Mr. West for, I think it's 2013 now. And I was, have always been very impressed with what he's did with the chamber and things like, and I agree with Councilwoman Rukowski on the small business and just, just having a, having a pulse on the communities is something that Mr. West has had since I've known him. And I've always appreciated his caliber when he did that, so I definitely am supportive of this.
Great. Any additional discussion? Any additional discussion? Any dissent? Roll call.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle? Councilwoman Rukowski?
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe?
Yes.
President McDermott?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Rest, please stand and be recognized.
New business. Item nine. Approval of agreement with the City of Westland in Wayne Westland Community Schools regarding the John Glenn High School Police Officer Liaison.
Some of support.
Effective shall be, agreement shall be effective for a one-year period commencing immediately. Motion by Councilman Hart?
Supported by Councilwoman Rukowski.
How dare I?
And is there any discussion from the maker?
None at this time.
And any discussion from the supporter? Is there any additional discussion from the council? And is there any dissent? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle? Councilwoman Rukowski?
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe?
Yes.
President McDermott?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. We will now move on to public comment. Everyone wishing to speak before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive, outburst threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. Speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is up or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Good evening. My name is Lori Wilson. I'm talking on, speaking on behalf of the Southeast Westland Homeowners Association. Thank you, Mayor, for your consideration with the issue I presented to you tonight. And I just wanted to let the neighbors know, it's going to get corrected.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my left? Yes, Ms. Sed. Oh, I'm sorry. Ruth.
Miss Dale.
Well, good evening, everyone. Ruth Dale, Westland. I like people saying what city they're from up here. I thought we were supposed to, actually. I'm going to be giving everybody in the room a history lesson on Annapolis Park. So listen up. Annapolis Park is 70 years old. Yep. Annapolis Park was actually developed as an African-American suburban neighborhood. It was platted in three sections. Modern ranch houses, mostly brick, were built with winding streets from 1953 to 1957. The first two model houses were built in 1953, fronting on Middle Belt Road. The remaining 352 were built from 1954 to 1957. And as a reminder, Annapolis Park was approved for National Register of Historic Places for its social and cultural significance in May 2006. And with the approval of the National Register, we were able to apply for a state marker, historical marker. And an application was sent to Lansing, and it was approved August, a few months later, 2006. One of the many criterias for National Register was doing 12 to 15 interviews with the original residents of Annapolis Park. And I'm telling you this because one of the questions was, what sold you, what sold you on living in Annapolis Park? And Mrs. Lovell West said, answered, "We wanted a home for our children with nice trees, nice country living." And I had to put this in because on the state historical marker, if all of you have read that, on Middle Belt, just north of Van Born. Well, if you haven't read it, you need to go there tomorrow. But anyway, the last line on the text is, "Nice trees, nice country living." So thank you, Lovell West, for your, your, part of your interview was put onto the marker. The National Register, I just, I don't know, I had to put this in since I did this. 82 pages you have to follow, and everything is very tedious, very precise. I can't even tell you how much, but anyway, 82 pages, what a job. And I don't know if I, oh, I don't have time left.
Sorry, Dale, your time is up.
Okay, I'm, oh, who hasn't come up? I need somebody to come up and read the marker text. Who's available?
All right, first off, is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left?
I can't believe I don't have a volunteer.
I have to say something. Ruth Dale is a magnificent historian. She helped us get that marker. She helped us get our designation.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Thank you, Ms. Dale.
So no one wants to read it? I can't believe it.
Dale?
I'll read it for you. We got a volunteer, yes.
Kim?
No, the president said.
Kim? You can come up.
Oh, you're worried to get called on? Now it's fine print, good luck.
Uh-oh.
Right here. Okay. Right there. Yep, it's not that long. Okay. Marker's text, what it will say. Here's the text approved by the Michigan Historical Commission for historic marker for Annapolis Park. During World War II, Detroit's black population doubled from 150,000 to 300,000. Too much caffeine. And faced the extreme housing shortage that had existed since the early 20th century. Restrictive covenants, inflated rents, and other discriminatory practices confined blacks to certain areas and hindered their ability to purchase property. In 1953, brothers Julius and William Schwartz broke around for Annapolis Park, a modern suburban neighborhood for African-Americans because few banks would approve loans for potential buyers. The Schwartzes and their brother-in-law, Jack Kelman, established the Franklin Mortgage Company by 1957. Annapolis Park's 354 lots were fully developed, and African-American families were able to live in a well-built home with nice trees, nice country living. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my left? Yes, Ms. Worm.
Good evening, council. Christina Worm is in our Wayne Community Citizens Council, and I just wanted to kind of highlight a couple events we have going on at the City of Westland Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center. So this Friday, we have the Family Prom Night, which is sponsored by the Norman Community Citizens Council. We had our Google form for registration open to 250, and we maxed out within a week. So really looking forward to this, as always. City council members, we have room for you. We would love for you to attend, anyone who's able to make it. We'd love to have you, and the community would love to have you as well. Also, the Michigan State University Extension Programs is working in combination with the 4H program. And they're coming to Esq. at the Jefferson Barnes. That's going to be this Thursday, or no, sorry, Thursday, February 15, from 5:30 to 7:30. So they're wanting to start a 4H fair-type group in the community. So they're going to have a family night. It's going to have lots of activities, lots of programs. So it's a nice introduction to that, and thank you to the Esq. champions of tomorrow for bringing that to our community.[1741.62] Um, also, one other thing, we have Storytime and Crafts at the Jefferson Barnes Vitality Center, um, in the library. So, we're doing that, and that is the second Thursday of every month at ten a.m. Um, so that's gonna be March fourteenth, April eleventh, and May ninth. So, the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center, for those that don't know, is located at three-two-one-five-zero Dorsey Street, and that is in Westland, within the Norway Historic District. So, thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Christina.
Is there anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my left? Ray.
Well, seems like Ray's gonna save the best for the last. Works around here. It's all good, anyway, 'cause I just, I thought I wasn't gonna talk tonight, but I'd love to talk, I guess. So, the new, I, what I like the new technology is, if you have no agendas out here, guess what? I can look on my phone. That is pretty cool. And anyway, I'm a very busy person here, and I'm wanting to share about, I'm also on the Disability Council. I'm a member now, appointed by the governor. I just definitely, I went to the one of them, it was great, and I'm going on a retreat in May. March is going to be my busy month. Ray's gonna be on tour, too. So, I'm planning on going up to Kevin's thing on next month, too, to hear him talk. Anyway, I'm wanting to listen to what you have to say to the residents, that's pretty cool. So, um, I'm gonna be training, and I'm doing quite a bit of stuff. I'm with my calendar, it's already starting to fill up, the police department, the fire department is my goal this year. So, I'm gonna keep knocking on doors, and it's important, people look up to me, and it's important, because, you know, I don't have, sometimes take no for answer. I go, and when I want to get something done, I get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my left? Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to comments from the administration.
Thank you, council. Uh, first of all, thank you to all the speakers tonight. Appreciate you taking the time and being here, and for all your thoughtful comments. In particular, I want to thank Ruth and Kim for the highlight of the Annapolis Park community. Uh, I was actually fortunate enough to spend my morning yesterday in Annapolis Park in the Carver Sub, particularly at Jeseminy Baptist Church and Christ Temple Apostolic Faith Church. Uh, and I got to address the congregations there and spend time with the, uh, with the people in attendance, and it was just a beautiful Sunday morning, and I enjoyed it very much. So, I want to thank Pastor Duckworth and Bishop McLendon for the invitation to go out there. February is Black History Month, and it's a time where we, um, pay tribute to the, to the, uh, the challenges of, that African-Americans have faced in our country, but also the incredible contributions to American society that they've made. And so, in the city of Westland, um, I was really pleased, and this, this happened in January, but our Martin Luther King Day celebration, I was actually able to award my very first key to the city as mayor to our first black lieutenant governor of the state of Michigan, Garland Gilchrist II. So, I wanted to thank the lieutenant governor for coming to Westland, uh, but it was also an honor of mine and a very special moment in my public service career to be able to do that. I want to thank everybody who participated in the MLK Day ceremony here at City Hall. Thank you to all the city employees who helped contribute to the, and to the council members and the clerk, uh, and everybody who was police and fire, everybody who contributed to that. I think it was just a really great, uh, thing that we did there, and I'm really excited to continue that tradition of carrying that on in our city. And as we go through the month of February, we're gonna be highlighting, uh, the contributions of African-Americans to our community and our nation as a whole. Um, in partnership with Naked and Transit, today, we honored Rosa Parks' birthday with free service to seniors and persons with disabilities as part of Transit Equity Day. And so, thank you to Naked and Transit for participating in that. I have a few people to congratulate. Uh, first of all, I want to thank Darrell Rounds, Brian Hopkins, David Sukas, and Jolene Bowman. Thank you for, uh, serving, uh, well, well, for the first three on the Planning Commission, but Jolene, thank you for serving on the Danton Development Authority. I really appreciate you taking, taking the time to serve the community in this way, and it's really my honor as mayor to nominate you, and thank you to city council for, um, approving these nominations tonight. Really appreciate that. And then, lastly, I'd like to thank Dan West for your service to the community as well, and for stepping up to serve on, on this commission. I'd also like to congratulate again our compassionate city awardees. Uh, these young people are really great examples for their peers at school, and then also our holiday decorating contest winners. Last month, Deputy Mayor Godbout and I traveled to Washington, DC to participate in the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Um, actually, former Mayor Wild reached out to me and encouraged me to participate in this conference. Uh, it was my first time participating, and I wasn't really sure going in, you know, what's the value of, of going all the way to DC and doing these meetings and this participation? And, uh, I took his word for it, though, he was our longest-serving mayor, and I, I decided to, to trust him on that and travel to DC with Deputy Mayor Godbout. We were able to take, um, in-office visits with our U.S. Senators Stabenow and Peters, and also our U.S. Congresswoman. And I felt like it was a lot of value to be able to, to go meet them on their turf, to go to DC and tell them about the needs of the city of Westland. Uh, that federal funding is really a big piece of, of our annual budget and the amount of stuff that we're able to do in the community. Uh, so it was very important to take those meetings and do that. And then, there was a lot of participation with other mayors from across the country, uh, looking at best practices in other communities, similar-sized cities as West, as, as Westland and even, uh, larger cities, and, and see some of the great progress that's being made across the country. So, I was, um, pleased to be able to go do that, and, um, I'm glad that our deputy mayor was able to join me. Uh, last month, I held my very first Listening Tour event at the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center. Uh, thank you, Christina, for highlighting some of the great events that go on there, and all the great work of the Norway Community Citizens Council. Keep up the great work. Uh, Jefferson Barnes is really a gem of our community, and, uh, if you haven't been there and been to the, any of the events, I really appreciate, uh, I would really encourage you to go out and, uh, and get to some of those great events. Uh, but our, um, Listening Tour is really less about me talking and more about listening. That's why it's called a Listening Tour. Uh, so I decided, you know, when I was a state representative, I moved, um, my coffee hour with Glenn Anderson, our county commissioner, from the library over to a coffee shop, but we were basically in the same place every month, same place, same time, every month. This is moving around, so this is different times a day. Sometimes it's in the morning, sometimes it's in the afternoon or evening. Uh, sometimes it's, it's more private, where we just go to, uh, live in senior home, or it's just open to the community as a whole. So, watch for these throughout the year. Uh, but my next one will be at, uh, the William P. Fost Public Library, that's our public library right on Central City, February twenty-sixth, at six p.m. So, I, I hope to have a great attendance at that one. And then, the one after that in March is gonna be at Westland City Hall, right here at City Hall, March nineteenth, at five-thirty p.m. I'd also like to welcome Westland's two newest businesses, Optive Health, Optive Health and Relax Acupressure Spa. And, um, I was able to get over and cut, cut the ribbon at the, the Acupressure Spa, and I, I kinda wanna shout them out because this is their third business in the city of Westland. They have another, uh, massage spa, and then they also have Kung-Fu Brothers Dumplings right here by Westland Mall. And, uh, I just appreciate, uh, when small business owners continue to invest in our city, so thank you for that. And then, lastly, I'd like to just, uh, say, you know, sometimes, we, we have a big city, we're the ninth-largest city in the state of Michigan, and sometimes we make mistakes. Uh, thank you, Ms. Wilson, for, for getting this to my attention, but we make our street signs in-house in our DPS department, and, uh, Hanover Boulevard was, I think, listed as Hanover Drive on the new sign. Hanover Avenue. So, we're gonna get that fixed. We know it's not an avenue, it's a boulevard, and you'll see it fixed very soon. But, um, thank you, city council, and thank you, everybody in attendance, and, uh, we'll see you soon. Thanks a lot.
Any comments from the city attorney's office?
Uh, I'd like to use a moment of time not to say nice words about Dan West, who I've known for over fifteen years, and he doesn't need his head pumped up anymore, but to use that time to remind the business owners in Westland that Livonia and Westland Chamber of Commerce is now one. It's a much bigger geographic territory, it has a much bigger footprint, um, promoting businesses here in the city of Westland as well as Livonia. A lot of crossover as, as this was explored last year and was just put together at the end of last year. So, uh, I think Mr. West, being on the Economic Development Corporation and other things, along with, uh, his role as, uh, CEO of the Livonia-Westland Chamber of Commerce, will be very valuable to the city, and you'll see more programming by the chamber here in the city of Westland as well, that, uh, you should keep an eye out for. So, if you've not met, uh, Mr. West, and you're in the audience, grab him on the way out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now begin council comments this evening with comments from Councilman Hertzberg.
Thank you, council president. Uh, first, I'd like to congratulate and thank all the individuals who stepped forward to serve on the various boards and commissions. Looking forward to hearing some new ideas and new perspectives and, and meeting you all. I haven't, uh, got to meet all of you yet, so looking forward to that. And I'd like to thank all the residents who came out on January thirtieth to vote. Uh, I won't let you down. Lastly, tonight, I just want to thank council for the discussion on the Heinz Park Sidewalk Project. Uh, just, it's just not something I was happy with. I don't think it was the best plan or the best use of money. Uh, I know the mayor was asking us to vote for it, but, um, there's a lot better things we could've done for that amount of money with that grant. We could've done a different project, so I don't know how it's gonna turn out now, if we're gonna amend that or not, but I just couldn't vote for using that money to build something within Heinz Park. You know, that's the county's responsibility. I, I wanna see us move forward and update a lot of our intersections for safety. Um, we need to fill in sidewalk gaps, there's a lot of work we need to be done, that needs to be done, so I was just a little disappointed to see that this, this was coming up on our agenda. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. We will now hear council comments from Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, council president. Good evening, everyone. Um, I want to take a, probably a third shake here at congratulating Leila, Sophia, and Nayeli for being compassionate children. Tonight, we recognized students that are part of our, um, our senior high schools and technical center, and I always, um, have a renewed faith in humanity when I see young people being recognized for, for being compassionate, and, you know, sometimes being a compassionate person is just doing something simple. You don't have to go and change the world, you just need to take one step forward. So, thank you, um, to these wonderful young women. You're, um, setting a beautiful example for your peers, and I look forward to seeing you continue to spread your compassion. I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Rounds, Mr. Hopkins, Mr. Sukas, Ms. Bowman, and Mr. West for their participation in our, um, different capacities here on different boards and commissions. Um, service to humanity is the best work of life, says the J.C.s, and I believe that. And our community is made more vibrant when, you know, everyone steps up and, and takes a, a piece of, um, the business and sits at the table. So, um, thank you for being a part of our community. Thank you for taking interest in our community. Um, we, we will be better for, for, for your service. I am super, super excited about the MSU, even though I'm a U of M grad, extension, coming to Esq. You know, the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center is a community center. Let's not forget that we do have a community center in our community, um, and the programming continues to expand. The MSU expansion or extension program isn't just 4-H, and it isn't just farm animals. Um, the 4-H component, um, also teaches financial literacy and, you know, what we might dare call adulting one-on-one to young people. It's a wonderful, um, set of programs that MSU has extended to local communities, and, you know, not too, too long ago, we actually were kind of farmland, right? And with country, um, scenery. So, I'm excited to see what the 4-H program is gonna look like, um, and I'll have to pop in and see that. If you are a new Planning Commission member, you can also use the MSU extension to become a citizen planner. They have a citizen planner, um, program where you can be very, become very educated in all things planning. Um, teaches you kind of how to be a planner without your personal bias getting in the way, or, you know, executing what our master plan, um, truly is stating, and that's what our, our planners, Planning Commissioners should do, and they also have a masters, um, master planner program. So, if you're part of the Planning Commission, I know Ms. Statchow has done it in the past as well as, uh, Ms. Richardson and myself. Um, very informative, and I think it's really worth the investment. With that, I would just like to wish everyone, um, a wonderful Black History Month. Educate yourself, learn something new. I'm doing that with my third graders. Every day, we're highlighting a historic figure, and, um, it's making the world a better place when we recognize the accomplishments and the struggles of others. So, you're never too young to learn. I suggest you invest some time, find out something you didn't know, and make yourself better for it. With that, I say good evening, and I hope you have a wonderful two weeks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilwoman Bowman.
I want to say congratulations to our new appointees for their, and their commissions, and, um, for, um, all the areas that they're working in. I'm not gonna repeat all the names, 'cause we've already done that, so I'll just, I'll just say, congratulations again to everybody that was, uh, got appointed today. I'd also want to just thank, um, some of the services in our, um, our city. Um, the, over Election Day, the offices were closed, and I had a resident reach out to me, and, um, I, I want to first ask grace, because I'm still learning some of the departments in our city, but I was able to help somebody, and I just wanted to let people know that if you have an issue, like with Department of Public Works, just a reminder that there is an emergency phone of seven-three-four-seven-two-two-ninety-six-hundred, um, even when the offices are closed, that's, that's available. Um, and so, I, I was glad, I was, I was very grateful to have had the support, um, for a couple of issues that happened, and I just want to thank everybody for their grace with me for, as I'm learning all of this and getting to know all this, um, and being able to help people as well. Um, I think, I don't have a lot more to say right now, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilman Hart.
Thank you, council president. Uh, I will, I'll be brief today. So, uh, real quick, thanks to all the appointees. Uh, you did volunteer at some point, somebody might've twisted your arm, but you did volunteer to do it, and, uh, thank you, and may the Lord hold and keep you. Um, we, we appreciate your, your talents and, and your, in your value and your perspective and your ability. It, it helps us all do the things that we do, helps the administration do the things that they do, helps us to get some good, uh, perspective when it comes before us, that I know that you guys have looked through it and vetted these things. So, I trust all of you, and, and I think it's well-placed. Um, so, thank you. Thank you for your service. Councilwoman said, Rakowski did say, "Service is the greatest, uh, service you made is the greatest work of life," and I agree with her. We're both J.C. snobs. So, but, uh, yeah, it was part of our credo, and, and thank you. Thank you for what you do. Welcome to the council, Councilman Delano. Look forward to having you again and all of your perspective, just like I look forward to everyone else's perspective. So, we're, we're gonna be busy this year, I can tell. Circling back, I missed a note. So, for the, for the planners, uh, that are now part of the Planning Commission, and Councilman Rakowski did bring it up, I want you to know that Citizen Planner Program is something that the council a few years ago worked together to actually make sure that that was available to you. That's funded by us, okay? So, if that's something you want to take advantage of, it's, it's no cost to you. As a, as a Planning Commission member, we encourage you to do it, and we cover the fee for that. So, do look into it. Um, there's no such thing as too many pieces of paper and certifications on the wall, especially when one's making it available to you at no cost. It's of value to yourself and to us and to everybody, so please do look at that. Last thing I want to bring up is something Ray brought up. God, I'm just tailing off of everybody today. Um, the, the agenda, absolutely. So, when you guys look outside, the agenda, it's just two pieces of paper, it's just got the agenda on it. All the supporting documentation is right on the website, on the main page. So, the actual packet today, for example, is a hundred and nine pages long, before you clutch your chest, that's a small one. You know, they get much bigger. I think we've had close to a thousand pages at once, you know, for all these things, but these are available to you. Uh, they're in PDF, and they're available on the Friday before, uh, council meetings. So, you can pull them down right there, it's on the front page, and all the supporting documentation. So, if you have questions about something that's in that packet, you can bring it up, or you can ask one of us in an email, and we can bring it up and help answer your question. Or maybe you saw something, we did it. It does happen, happens a lot, so go ahead. If you see something we didn't see, bring it up. But that way, you have all the supporting documentation, so if you want to see a drawing that was there and you had more questions, it's right there. So, it's available to you on Fridays, that's when it goes public on the website, it's on the main page, you collect on agendas and minutes, and all of the boards and commissions and city councils are there with their current agendas and packets. So, it's there, it's available for you. So, please pull it down. Uh, with that, I'll go ahead and be quiet for the rest of the day. Thank you, council president.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hornbuckle.
Thank you. I want to start off first by thanking, uh, everyone here on the dais for appointing me to this position. It's definitely an honor, and, uh, definitely appreciate everyone's support, um, the meetings and the talk and the suggestions, I definitely take those to heart. Uh, also, I want to thank my family for being here, um, my Uncle John for coming all this way to support me. Um, I think I made them proud today, so thank you for being here. I want to thank everyone that got appointed today. Uh, I did briefly look over everyone's resume, and they are amazing, uh, some amazing resumes, so, um, I see great talent coming to help the city. I do want to jump on a bandwagon with Dan West. Um, as a, as a member of the chambers, um, from being Westland's to Livonia's is night and day, um, a lot of great activities happening, um, and I expect that same, um, mentorship brings to the table to this, uh, group here. So, thank you, and thank you all for being a part of, uh, the Westland, and I look forward to working with you and being at your meetings and getting feedback. to working with you and being at your meetings and getting feedback from you guys as well. I look forward to working very closely with the mayor and the administration. I know most of our focus over the years has been around here, City Hall, but I want to help focus, direct our focus to outside and coming in, bringing new development, new programs to reach our other community, to bring them in, to make them feel like they're part of Westland. Little stuff like having signs that say, "Welcome to Westland." That's just little things that's important to these different areas of the city. So I would like to work closely with the city administration and kind of drive, bring in outside areas of our city closer in and make them feel like this is home because this is home for them. But again, thank you everyone for being here and I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Pro Tem Sampi.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for attending the meeting. It has been mentioned about Black History Month obviously being in February. I'm also going to highlight too, I'm wearing red. It's American Heart Month as well, so my mom had a heart event, routine procedure, surgery, just maintenance on her heart. It's been about two years and she was on life support for like two weeks. So I feel it really important that we just stay on top of our heart health as well too. It's really important. So this is something that I like to highlight in February since it is American Heart Month. We did congratulate the students, so there's a lot of regurgitation of congratulations, but thank you to those compassionate students that came this evening to our holiday decorating winners. I think the displays were beautiful as always. Again, congratulations to the appointments. I won't go again, but thank you so much, those that are in the audience. I think you heard it from many of us, we appreciate new blood and excitement and it sounds like you guys are going to do some amazing things. Also, congratulations to our new councilmen as well too, and I appreciate obviously your willingness. We did speak, I spoke with nearly everyone as well too, and there are some really great candidates and I appreciate everyone who reached out. I just wanted to touch on a few things on today's agenda. The adoption and amendments of the City Code of Ordinance to adjust the rates of the city, I'm reading it right from the packet, the city golf course and ice arena. So I gave Dan Statchow, in addition to all of my colleagues, the golf rate sheet as well. Last meeting, there was a question on where do we sit in comparison with other golf courses? So I have a few copies, but if anyone's interested, we did adopt the new rates this evening, but I do have a copy of it in case anyone's interested in learning more. Also, the approval of the Michigan Class Investment Pool as an authorized investment. I had asked, this actually is a good thing for the city. So I had asked administration to provide us a list of all the participants. Nearly Westland was probably the only one on this long packet and list that wasn't included. So it is giving us the opportunity to delay some investments, but also if we need to keep the investment in there longer, and I'm sorry, I don't know if there's anyone from finances here, hopefully I'm speaking correctly, it allows us to get more financial gain from the investment. So I have copies of these as well too. I had a resident that reached out to me with questions, but I did share it with my colleagues just so everyone knows. Hopefully, everyone got the email. It's been mentioned about our parks and rec. I was hoping that Kyle would be here, but they have a lot of great new programming going on, a lot of family-friendly events, family-centered events. So I'd encourage everyone to just hit the main page of cityofwestland.com to check that out. Also, our library is hosting a lot of lectures and some teen events. So there's a lot of great things going on over there and I do not want to forget, I know that Ms. Warren brought it up, but Jefferson Barnes always has amazing programming and this happens all year round. So it's consistent programming. So I think it was mentioned by my colleague that this is our community center. They offer programming that reaches all ages as well too. So I would be looking for it, hopefully, so my stepdaughter, I'm going to be a mimi, so hopefully she doesn't have the baby before then, but I'm hoping that I can join you on Friday. So Friday, the 9th, from 6:00 to 8:00. I'm going to list everything on my Facebook page too, if anyone's interested. But I wanted to just replug that because our parks and rec is building up, they're doing a lot of great programming and a lot of great new events too that is pretty exciting in the city. I wanted to thank you, to our Westland and Wayne Police Departments. So thank you, gentlemen. We really beat up on Wayne's team. They did a charity basketball game. I was with there with my colleague, Councilwoman Rukowski, we were there and it was fantastic. I think the score was almost 100 to maybe 30 or something like that, but you know. But it was for a great, great, great charity. It was for the Westland Youth Athletic Association. It was held, they're a nonprofit organization, they serve Westland in youth sports since 1958. Ray, thank you for bringing up your accomplishments too and congratulations on your appointment. That is very exciting. I know that next month is a big month, being Disabilities Awareness Month in March, so hopefully we can talk more, maybe we'll bring a little light to that like we did last year. So thank you again for coming up and reminding us, Ray. You always bring up some great topics, so I appreciate that. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, February 20th. We will not have a Monday meeting, we're meeting on Tuesday at 7:00. If anyone has any questions or issues, you always can reach out to me, Councilwoman Melissa Sampi, on my personal Facebook page, or you can call my cell, 734-637-2078. Be kind and safe with each other and we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Well, first off, I'd like to thank the Pro Tem for leading us tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance. I want to congratulate all the kids on their compassionate acts, Leila, Sophia, and Naiela for the great work that they have done displaying compassionate acts here in the city. I want to congratulate all the holiday winners, Jason Wright, Patrick Palesko, and the additional winner for their creative, original, and traditional displays. I want to thank everybody who stepped up to serve on a board or commission. You know, we do all this work up here, but without each one of you, it's not possible to operate this city. And I know one of the things for folks who've been on boards and commissions for a long time have made note of is you are horribly underpaid for the amount of work that we are asking you to do. And if there's something that we can do together to work on that with the administration as a council, I know that's something that has been longstanding request to have addressed. But for those of you, Mr. Rounds, Mr. Hopkins, Mr. Sukas, Ms. Bowman, and Mr. West, thank you for stepping up. Sometimes it is a thankless job, but we certainly are very appreciative of you all and everybody who's on a board or commission to help make our city operate. I want to thank the clerk's office for running an election, one of about, what, 500 elections that you have to run this year, so thank you for that.
There's a lot.
Thank you for all that you will do.
Thank you.
And there is a reminder, speaking of the clerk's office, about early voting that is coming up for the presidential preference primary. It will be from 8:30 to 4:30 PM on-
8:30 AM.
8:30 AM, excuse me, to 4:30 PM on February 17th through February 25th. It is right here, early voting at City Hall. So come out and vote, keep the clerk busy here, as if the state hasn't already given you enough to be busy with this year.
Thank you.
Ray, congratulations on your appointment from the governor's office, well-deserved as always. Thank you to Christina for coming up and talking about all the wonderful things at Jefferson Barnes Vitality Center. Just a note about Jefferson Barnes too, even though it's located in Norway, it is, as my colleagues said, Westland's community center. It is not just for Norway neighbors, it is for all of us to enjoy here in Westland. And there are so many great programs for families, wraparound and social support services, the boxing gym, pickleball, indoor pickleball. So, so much great stuff happening down at Jefferson Barnes all the time too. So you can check them out on cityofwestland.com, they have the calendar, and a lot of the stuff at Jefferson Barnes is listed on the city's website. And I think, just a couple of more things here. One thing that I wanted to make note of, so we are celebrating Black History Month and one person that I think is really incredibly important to not only Black History but for all of us here, his name is Robert C. Weaver. If you're not familiar with Mr. Weaver, he was actually the first appointee to the Department of Housing and Urban Development by President Lyndon Baines Johnson. As you know, LBJ, albeit not always willingly, was prodded along by the work of many civil rights activists, not just Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Medgar Evers and Malcolm X, but many civil rights activists to pass not only the Civil Rights Act and the Voting Rights Act. But he took it one step further when he appointed in 1966, Robert C. Weaver as the first appointee to the Housing and Urban Development. And President Johnson made big investments for the first time in American history in truly affordable housing. And not only affordable housing for Americans, but affordable housing for all Americans. Because prior to President Johnson passing civil rights legislation and voting rights legislation, we were everywhere in America, as evidenced here in Westland with Annapolis Park. And the reason that Carver Sub in Annapolis Park had to be built in the first place, you look at many suburbs across metro Detroit, Dearborn, obviously the highlight of bigotry and racism with Oral Hubbard. And so, to have a historic appointment, the first African-American appointment to a newly-created department that was there to not only provide affordable housing, but to break up segregation in housing, one of the most important, basic human rights to have, Robert C. Weaver appointed there was a big display by President Johnson to let the country know we were headed in a new direction and we will not be intimidated by Jim Crow and segregation and policies of the past. So I wanted to spotlight Mr. Weaver. There are so many people worth highlighting during Black History Month, as my colleagues have said, you know, take the time to do some research, go to the library, go on Google and the numerous in, across our country, across our culture, across science and technology, politics, sports, education that black and brown individuals and African Americans have contributed to our society. So don't stop here, don't stop with Mr. Weaver or any of the aforementioned people tonight. Do some research and learn about, learn something new for yourself and something that you didn't know. With that, if you need anything from me, I'm always available on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott and also on my cellphone at 734-890-2146. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Okay.